I'd like to call to order the Avalon City Council meeting of Tuesday, September 1st. Denise, may we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Cassidy?
Here.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Here.
Councilmember Sampson?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Olson?
Here.
And Mayor Marshall? Here. You please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance to be led by Councilmember Sampson.
Please face the flag. Ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, with no nation of the power, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please remain standing for the invocation to be said by Ron Garcia from Southern California, Edison.
Please bow your heads and we'll pray together and let's all just take one big old breath and slow down. We're so blessed, Lord, to be here in Avalon. Catalina, our heavenly Father, you bless us in a hundred thousand ways. Help us always to recognize the blessings and also the challenges that you offer us. Lord, we know that with patience you have answers and, Lord, we want to thank you for this city council who has worked to answer the challenges of this island community. Lord, they've done an excellent job. We may not always agree, but they do listen and for that we thank them. Help them to continue to keep the families in Avalon at their utmost efforts and also for us to be supportive of them as they face the challenges. Lord, we want to thank you for the men and women who are overseas protecting and defending our country. Lord, be with them and their families and bring them home safely. And, Lord, for these beautiful creations here in Avalon and around the world, we thank you. Help us to always focus on you, your Creator. You are Creator and not your creations, oh Lord. All these things we ask in your son's name and again, Lord, we thank you for all the great religious leaders you've sent us through the history of mankind, but I pray in your son's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Any announcements?
None that I'm aware of.
Okay. Written communications?
None this evening.
Presentations?
Yes, Mayor, we have a proclamation this evening recognizing September 2015 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month and I believe that you are reading it into the record.
Yeah. A proclamation of the City Council of the City of Avalon recognizing September 2015 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection, REPORT Cancer, is the leading cause of death by disease among U.S. children between infancy and age 15. This tragic disease is detected in nearly 15,000 of our country's young people each and every year. Whereas one in five of our nation's children loses his or her battle with cancer. Many infants, children, and teens will suffer from long-term effects of comprehensive treatment, including secondary cancers. And whereas founded over 20 years ago by Stephen Firestein, a member of the philanthropic Max Factor Cosmetics family, the American Cancer Fund for Children, Inc., and Kids Cancer Connection, Inc., are dedicated to helping these children and their families. And whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection provide a variety of vital patient psychosocial services to children undergoing cancer treatment at Children's Hospital Los Angeles, the City of Hope, Mattel Children's Hospital at Ronald Reagan UCLA Medical Center, L.A. County USC Medical Center, Kaiser Permanente Medical Center, as well as participating hospitals throughout the country, thereby enhancing the quality of life for these children and their families. And whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection also sponsor courageous kid recognition award ceremonies, community get well cards, and hospital celebrations in honor of a child's determination and bravery to fight the battle against childhood cancer. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Avalon would like to thank Kids Cancer Connection for all their support in honoring and encouraging those living with cancer and encouraging our citizens to raise our awareness about the prevention and control of cancer. Dated this first day of September 2015, Avalon City Council.
Cool.
City manager report.
Yeah, the only item that I have this evening is that we are going to be coming back to you shortly with information about Oktoberfest, which is scheduled for the 24th of October, obviously, so more details to follow. Just wanted to throw that date out there and again, we'll be bringing some information back to you. Thank you.
City attorney report?
Just to note that at the next meeting we'll be considering the ROCS, which are the Schedule for Redevelopment Payments and Projects that we want to do, so we'll be considering, among other things, whether the council wishes to reinstitute or continue the Downpaying Assistant Program.
Excellent. Council? Councilmember reports? Cindy, would you like to start?
Yep, I have two quick ones. I'll be attending Gateway City's Council of Government meeting tomorrow, as well as a Transportation Committee meeting, and we'll report out at the next meeting. And the second one is just a question. Do we have a timeline on when we're going to do a formal debrief from up for whatever?
We do not have a timeline. We do need to do that. I've been negotiating with Mosaic about the return of their deposit and the payment of the city invoice and the settling of some accounts and so we have not resolved that yet, but we don't need to wait for that nor to do the debrief and so we can schedule that and I won't worry about it.
Thank you for bringing that up again.
Thanks. That's all I have.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Just a reminder, tomorrow's first day of school and I'd like to see everybody drive their kid to school tomorrow. No, just kidding. I would like to see everybody walk your kid to school tomorrow, please, because it's such a cluster in the morning and I know the fire department has a little problem with that because the cars are always backed up all the way past the fire station from the school, so, you know, if you can, please try to walk your children to school tomorrow. I know it's kind of hectic day because it's the first day of school, so just a reminder for tomorrow. Thanks.
Very good. Councilmember Sampson?
Reiterate. Good point, yeah. No, that's about all I have for right now. Thank you.
Couple things. A citizen came up to me and advised me that when we fixed the steps at Step Beach, that we forgot the last step.
Yeah.
And so some of our bathers are having difficulty exiting the water. Do we have a plan with that or that?
Well, this has been mentioned a couple times and there wasn't a last step forgotten, but we can certainly add another step and so I can take that with Dennis and we can talk about it more. We can come back to you.
So some are having difficulty getting on. And tomorrow being the first day of school, on Friday, it's the first Avalon High School football game at Joe Machado Field at 5:00 o'clock.
Perfect.
So be there in half one. Thanks.
You know, and there was a discussion about the steps and when they looked at the tide charts, the low tides are at 3:00, 3:30 in the morning and whatever and been it being summer and all that, that was another reason it was kind of delayed, but yeah, it has been considered, so thanks for bringing that up. I was wondering if it were possible to request just an informal report from CRNR on the impact of the landfill since we've been in drought and I think this must be coming.
It is.
Sweet.
I'm not sure if it'll be the 15th of September or the first meeting in October. I just had a conversation with CRNR yesterday.
Perfect.
I hope to get them to come like every two months to give us an update on different things.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Denise. That's awesome. And I know there's been, I've had a discussion with Ben and probably you have in your meetings too, about the shindig we want to throw when the D-cell plant goes online and the discussion about inviting dignitaries and that kind of thing and working with Edison and making sure we've got a little bash planned for that special day, so I'm sure Ben will be working with whomever, but we look forward to that, that we're very excited that D-cell is here. And it got a lot of publicity, which was very nice.
More coming.
Then we're coming. Excellent. Okay. And that's all I have. Oral communications? This is the timeline. Members of the community may speak on an item that is not on the agenda. No action will be taken and you have three minutes in which to say it.
Mayor, City Council, thank you again for having me tonight. I just had one question for the mayor. I'd just like to know why one of your staff members, Amanda Cook, from Planning Department, have been on paid administrative leave for approximately seven weeks now, costing the city roughly $15,000 for an employee that isn't performing any work for the city.
Well, you asked me the question and that is a personnel matter which I'm not able to discuss, so if the city attorney wants to add to that, that's great.
That is exactly the correct answer. It's a personnel matter. We cannot discuss.
Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, staff, and our neighbors. It is really honestly good to be here in Avalon. I've had to be away for a couple of, two, three weeks. We had some issues over town that required my attention and they don't treat me as good as you folks do. So I'm really, I'm not kidding, we're happy to be somewhat home. So anyway, I do want to report out on the desalinization plant and how it's going and where we are today. And several of you were there to greet and meet the new desalinization unit that arrived on August 24th. You didn't get to see it set on the slab, but you did see it in place. And so the same day it was delivered, it was put in place. It's a general electric reverse osmosis unit and it's sitting there and by mid-September, end of September, we hope that it's producing water. And then shortly after it starts to produce water, the water will be tested and we're very reasonably sure we'll be able to get some permits to start delivering water by the end of September to, hopefully by the end of September, first part of October, to the island community, to the Avalon community. So all the equipment foundations are poured, including the tanks, the foundations for the tanks and the pumps and the electrical equipment and the reverse osmosis unit and there's just a lot of work going on over there, a lot of activity and it's a really tight spot, so the engineering of this thing was just amazing and the teamwork that went together to get it in and up and running is also amazing. So 90% of the above ground and below ground piping has been installed and so that's going to be along well and the remaining items are to install, the tanks, the pumps, the electrical wiring, and the metering equipment. And again, we expect that mid-September, late September, and then after a couple of weeks of running that pump plant or running that plant, getting permission to deliver the water from the Division of Department of Water Resources. So anyway, we did talk about, and we have been meeting as to, the big rollout, the big party, the ribbon cutting ceremony, had discussions with Ben about that and Mayor, you've shared some of your ideas and we're talking about what we could do to make this really an exciting, fun event. We are going to turn to you to give us an idea of who you want to invite as guests. It's a pretty small place to have a whole lot of people, but we can squeeze in maybe 100 or so, so we want to see what dignitaries want to come and how we roll this out to the community. So lastly, not talking about the cell unit, over town we did have some serious issues with our electrical system and we found in doing that that we don't know where our medical baseline customers are, simply because they need to let us know. So if you're out there and you're listening and you're a medical baseline customer who needs electricity for medical equipment to help you feel healthier, please contact the Edison Company. Let us know where you are in the event of a real difficult time, emergency. We want to be able to give you special attention. And also, there's a special rate for customers who need electricity to run that type of equipment. So again, if you haven't done so, check out our California Alternative Race for Energy and how you can get discounts for your rates if you qualify and the medical baseline. And shortly soon, 150,000 a day fresh water coming from the desalinization to the new unit. Thank you for your partnership and contribution.
Thank you very much. Okay. Anybody else like to speak? Okay. Consent calendar.
Yes, Mayor, you have seven items on the consent calendar this evening. I should add that for the actions, the Mayor Pro Tem will need to abstain from voting on both as he was on excused absence and...
I was here for the second one.
Were you?
Yes.
Apologies.
My apologies.
And that same, that's right, you came back for that earlier, I'm sorry. Councilmember Hernandez, I believe, did have an excused absence for the second action, I think, the 25th. Am I right about that? Denise?
I'm sorry.
Councilmember Hernandez needs to abstain himself from the second action.
Yes, from the second one. And so I will be correcting the actions on the second meeting to reflect that Ollie was present.
Okay, very good. Next item, so anyway, so the actions are from the August 18th meeting and the August 25th meeting.
And I'll need to abstain from item number seven. The Vons.
I'll abstain from number seven as well.
Okay. Would you like me to read through the other items on the consent calendar?
Sure.
Okay. I don't have to, but I've...
Oh, no, whatever you want to do.
Okay.
Whatever you usually do.
Next on the consent calendar is a resolution urging the State of California to provide new sustainable funding for local transportation infrastructure. We have an item related to requisite roofing repairs here at City Hall, an item designating a city staff member to serve as the point person to the state on emergency and disaster relief assistance. We have another item related to the survey from storm damage, a progress payment for E-BUS, and then the aforementioned conditions related to the upholding of the Planning Commission decision on the Vons' appeal.
Counsel, at your pleasure.
Could I just ask Ben a quick question on number four? Just the way that it was written and the way that it's listed on the designation of applicant's agent, it lists administrative analyst, management aide, or city manager, but that's, it's not in any order correct. It just means either of the three positions.
Right.
Okay.
If you keep city manager or an analyst or...
I just thought it was interesting that the city manager was listed last.
I'm fine with that.
Can I just ask a simple question about item three without pulling it?
Sure. Roof repair.
Is it possible when they're up there to put in some rain gutters? Because they'll already be up on the roof and I don't know how much more money it would cost, but that, this part of the building has the ability to have rain gutters.
Let me ask our public works director. The question is, can we add rain gutters while we're up there? Yeah, we can probably do a change order, but we'll see what he says about this time.
Good evening. Yes, we could. It'll be a change ordered. As you know, the building is constructed to drain inside of the walls, which is an issue.
But not on the ones that still look like casitas, I don't believe.
Yes, that's correct.
They're in there too?
It just would be a minor modification, then we could put a water tote below.
Right. I mean, I don't know, Counsel, if you think, I mean, I think we need to kind of set an example for rain gutters and if we're already up there and it's not the inside of the wall portion, it would seem like, I don't know, I don't know, it's just a thought. I mean, you don't have to agree. I would just like to see...
The repair is going to be done on the small section of roofing over here, correct?
Several places. Wherever it's leaking is going to be fixed. This quadrant above Finance is going to be re-roofed. Above Planning is going to be re-roofed.
Oh, okay.
And then the whole back section, flat roof, is going to be re-roofed.
Oh, really? And that, this big?
Yep.
Is containing all those three elements then?
Yes.
Oh, really?
All of our problems should be solved. This roofing here is determined to be okay over the council chambers and a few other portions is determined to be okay.
This house has the most square footage up here, correct?
Correct.
And that's where you're talking about putting in a gutter system?
Well, it's basically over Finance, I think is where the existing casita is, so that's the one that could handle the rain gutters, because these other ones, it takes a lot more work because the gutters are basically in the wall.
Yes.
I just thought if we could capture that, at least some.
And maybe put some totes out there to where we can reuse that rainwater?
Exactly.
Makes a great idea.
Yeah.
I don't know.
That could be a conversion.
Okay, seems like there's a...
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Is that a motion?
Please.
I'll move staff on one, two, four, and six and seven with the noted abstentions.
Okay. Will the public like to comment?
One, two, four. One, two, three, four, and then six and seven. We're not doing five right now.
Right, right.
We're going to discuss seven? Can I pull that one?
Should we pull seven, too?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll amend the motion to cover one to four and six.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
I second.
They moved in second. A call for the vote?
Mine's not working.
Is Rich working?
Uh-oh.
Uh-oh?
Uh-oh.
Uh-oh.
Oh, none of us are working.
Technical term.
It's an Edison electrical problem.
Okay, try it again.
Item five?
So five was just the cost of the hurricane area and that's most of all the damage, heavy and stuff like that?
Well, actually, this is a little bit more than that. The state is requiring us to come up with engineered figures and so, you know, obviously, if they're going to reimburse us, they want to have some...
They want the figure.
They want an expert to come in and say, "Yeah, we agree with that and here's what we think is involved," and so we're asking for your permission to go out for an RFP for this so that we can have someone assess the damaged areas and then we can then submit that to the state.
Okay. And we have somebody in line already for that?
We have some firms that we have identified to send those to and we, of course, will be welcome to any other firms if you guys have someone in line.
I was just wondering what that was for.
Is there a motion on item five?
Move staff.
All second. Any comments? Call for the vote?
All eyes?
Item number seven?
Because this item's been pulled, we're going to have to have the mayor and...
I will abstain due to a financial conflict.
I will abstain due to my proximity to the location?
Ollie's going to take it. Take over, Ollie. Got it. Mr. Hernandez?
No, it was just, this is the stuff we kind of talked about prior, right, to the Vons thing? And we're talking about the carts, right? Not the golf carts. We're talking about the cart, a lot of the push carts to be contained, right? Is that what we're talking about, Olson? On this and the parking, does that, parking also come up on that?
Yeah, the parking is there. As part of the, what's going to happen is there requires that there be a traffic and parking plan that will work with Vons and Island Company to create additional parking spaces along Sumner as part of this resolution.
Okay, but that has nothing to do with the parking on the street then?
Okay, I think we're talking about a couple different things. So the city attorney was just speaking to a separate project that we are going to embark upon with the Island Company for additional parking spaces. That is not part of this. However, to your point, Councilmember Hernandez, number seven addresses, I think this is the condition, curbside parking in the 200 block of Sumner and Catalina, is that the concern?
Yeah, one of the concerns, yeah.
So what we are, Brian Bratton from Vons, myself, and Michelle Black from CISA have been talking about this particular condition in detail and we are exploring a number of different concepts to address, as one of them being potentially creating resident permit stickers perhaps as a way to allow for overnight parking for those residents in that area that don't already have off-site parking stipulated by the Planning Commission, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
It's done in other coastal communities to great success and we hope that we could implement it in those areas resulting from this condition.
Now, is that a number, where do we get that number? Is it a 10? Is it a 20? Is it 50 cars? Or is it the whole block or how's that, where do we come about that?
The devil's in the details and so we're talking with Michelle from CISA, which we trying to identify, you know, who, what's the area, you know, who's impacted, who's not, and then how do we thoughtfully come back to you with an approach?
Okay, so when that's all done and processed, they'll bring it back to us and then they'll say, "This is what we come up with," and then we could go from there, yeah? Okay, so the people who have residence could park in a 30-minute parking or all day or is that just the overnight parking?
The way these normally work...
I mean, we haven't really, nothing's in concrete yet. Everything's still in the...
The way they work in other communities and feel free to chime in here, the way I've seen them effectively work is there's usually an area that's designated and there's signage posted that says no overnight parking except by permit.
Okay.
And so you have to have a special permit affixed on your lotto wet and it's only in that designated area and it's only overnight. It's usually...
It's also data.
Say again?
If you have a resident in Sumner or Catalina, you have a house there and you'll have a sticker that I think will let you park there anytime. You won't be limited by the one-hour parking.
Okay, well, this is what we'll have to come back to you guys because...
And that's what I was kind of getting at, I was just talking to some people that are concerned with that, with the resident versus the 30-minute parking.
So we can come back with some different flavors of this, you can tell us which...
Okay. What's the mess for us?
Okay. And on top of that, though, there also will be some discussions, of course, about the curb there and changing, you know, the colors if that addresses...
Okay.
We're trying to create some solutions that work for, obviously, the residents, but also customers and the town in general, so...
Right, so we're creating solutions and hopefully not creating problems.
That's the idea.
Is that what we're talking about?
Absolutely. That's the goal.
That's a wait-and-see? Okay. All right, that's, just wanted to make sure.
But we know this is important and we haven't...
Because it's going to be a hot topic. It's going to be, it's going to, I just want, that was just my concerns with that. Okay? I just want to make sure it's coming back to us once everything is done. Okay.
I will entertain a motion.
Public?
Oh, public, okay, public. That's right, you go.
So I just wanted to be clear before you guys vote, if you vote to approve it, which you obviously are going to, does that mean the one-hour parking will be approved and then follow-on subsequently you will amend it or there will be no one-hour parking? The whole parking issue's tabled until figured out?
What the council is doing tonight is they are formalizing the conditions they already placed on this project.
Right, and I'm asking...
So we're now, so there's no immediate implementation as a result of tonight's action.
Okay.
We were working to address the conditions outlined in the project.
Okay, because one-hour parking is outlined, right, in the M and D?
Yes, it is.
Number seven.
So you're effectively approving one-hour parking by ratifying this?
It won't be implemented until the whole problem is solved, until everything's done.
It'll be, again, it says to facilitate one-hour parking.
But to make it black and white, you're approving it, right, until it's...
Yes, to put that requirement in and then we're going to be working with the developer to come up with a plan to best, we're working with the developer and CISA's attorneys to work for a plan that everyone can live with.
Okay.
But will include the one-hour parking.
And is that going to be taken to the public, you know, in subsequent city council meetings for public discussion and so forth?
On some of these conditions, such as parking, we'll be coming back to the council with a concept. We will not come back to the council on every single condition because some of them are items that don't lend themselves to that. For example, you know, the staging plan for the construction, we're not going to obviously come back and say, "Do you approve that?" But, you know, the items that are sensitive, that we know that there's a need for some dialogue, we will do that.
Is there part of a committee to go along with, you guys, have you picked a committee maybe or no?
There's no committee, so I've been acting on behalf of the city. Brian Bratton's been acting on behalf of the applicant and then we've been working with the lead from CISA, who's identified herself as Michelle Black.
Okay, so they're a part of that?
Yes, yeah.
All right. I personally feel uncomfortable with, out of these 10 pages, that's the one thing I circled was the one-hour parking because within the parking structure of Vons, we already have 32 parking spots and one that's dedicated to a full-size vehicle. a full-size vehicle. The point I made the night we voted on this was it, I don't want all that parking that's, we're going to create, um, or all those, those nine parking spots that we're going to try to create down Sumner Avenue, I didn't want that to all be dedicated to one-hour parking because it's going to take away from the people that are going to be, um, walking down on Front Street and patronizing a lot of the businesses that, um, will benefit the community, not just Vons. So, um, I wanted to talk about that. This one-hour parking on Sumner disturbs me. Is this...
Well, let's, let's be clear on this, if I could, just because the way this condition reads, I think it's allowing for your concern and...
Everybody, yeah.
Because the way this condition reads, it says, "Applicant and owner shall share the cost equally with the city to reprogram the curbside parking in the 200 block of Sumner and Catalina to facilitate additional one-hour parking."
Additional, okay.
So, so, so we're taking that in the spirit of the discussion that was had and we're, like I said, we're trying to keep in mind the needs of the residents as well as the visitors, as well as the customers of that store, so that we can cobble together a solution that, that works.
Yeah, because a, a lot of people commented on, they were concerned about that whole area on Sumner and Catalina being turned into one-hour parking, which is not the case.
And that's not the way this condition reads.
It's just the extra parking that we're, we're trying to create.
To facilitate additional one-hour parking.
Okay, yeah, facilitate additional one-hour parking. Then we're also going to address the fact that there's only one, one full-size, uh, vehicle parking and we're going to need more than that possibly on, on the, um, west side of, um, Sumner Avenue, um, which we're going to look into that, correct?
Yes.
For full-size vehicles because there'll be multiple full-size vehicles, uh, more than likely coming in to need to use the store for, let's say, their weekly, bi-weekly shopping and, and, um...
Right.
Just general parking. Because I don't want to see full-size vehicles get shoved out because we have a lot of parking in this town that's dedicated strictly to golf carts and I think we're forgetting that there are still a lot of regular vehicles that people utilize and, and we can't discriminate against those.
Understood.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Sampson.
Uh, yeah. Wanted to follow on, just so I'm crystal clear, that the shopping cart containment, are we containing them or not containing them?
So, that's...
We're, we're containing them.
We are containing them. Okay.
Yeah.
Because that's what it seemed like and then it ended up back in the NMD.
And changed back.
As no containment. So 100%, they will be contained, is the answer tonight.
Well, okay, Mayor, Mr. Mayor Portem, if I may, if I can read this condition.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and this is available for you if you'd like to have this document.
Right, I understand.
Um, number 11, shopping carts. Advocate may submit to the city a plan for its review and approval wherein shopping carts are allowed for home grocery delivery in an effort to prevent additional autoet trips to the market. If submitted, said plan shall include a shopping cart retrieval component which must be submitted to the city for its review and approval. Shopping cart retrieval component of the plan may require the city to modify the Avalon Municipal Code. That's how the condition is.
Yeah, I understand. It gives them the option to apply for it, but wasn't one of the, uh, circumstances with the approval to not allow it, period?
With the planning commission, was it, was it that?
Right, and then...
Part of the planning commissions?
And then you guys, you guys said, "Yeah, basically, we don't want..." And the city attorney said, "Yes, we can amend it so that the city streets' names are different for the containment."
That was one of the conditions from the planning?
No. Yes, we looked at the videotape. This condition allows, um, if, it allows you to consider, um, if you want to allow shopping cart delivery, you know...
So it'd come back to us?
But it's got to be, it's got to come back.
It's got to be approved, too.
You guys have to amend, you guys have to approve that. It's not allowed right now.
Okay.
Again, you have to approve if you want to allow golf carts to go beyond this area. Okay? Comes back to you.
Shopping carts, yes.
I'm sorry.
That's all right. You're good.
And, and the first thing is the applicant has to submit a plan.
Right.
Okay.
So you have to, we have to get a plan, we have to review it, and then we provide it to you for consideration.
Thank you. I think that really cleared it up for everyone. Thanks.
I was just...
Thank you. Oh, yeah, I'm, make a motion to approve item number seven.
Second?
Three eyes, Sampson, Hernandez, and Olson, and two abstentions, Mayor Marshall and Councilmember Cassidy.
Is there anything else we want to do before the ladies are back? Take advantage of this? Darns. Welcome back.
Well, we had no reportable action back there, so...
We passed item seven.
Okay. Okay. Item number eight, general business.
Yes, ma'am. Three items this evening under drug, general business. The first one being a Drug-Free Workplace Act and Department of Transportation Drug and Alcohol Testing Policy. So as you know from, uh, discussions we've been having on this over the last few months, maybe a year, um, staff has brought forward after consultation with the city attorney's office, a, uh, drug-free workplace policy. I should point out that this is just a policy. The, uh, components of the policy that will be required for its implementation are not yet in place, namely, the, the lab that we would be using, the software to generate, um, random, uh, names for, for testing. Um, further, this is in discussion and negotiation with our employee associations currently, uh, with all three of them. I can tell you that one association has tentatively, tentatively approved, uh, the policy. Uh, we are still discussing it with the other two. So, we are asking that the city council adopt the policy tonight, does not implement the policy, if that makes sense. It's similar to what you did, uh, when you accepted the COF study for salary survey. Uh, you're just simply adopting but not implementing because we are negotiating with the associations on the implementation of the policy, if that makes sense.
So are you saying that things in this policy could change?
Things could change, um, and, and, and we also need to line up the components that require it to be implemented. In other words, if we...
I understand the implementation part, but, but...
It's subject to negotiation with the other, uh, unions. We certainly can adopt it as a city saying that this is our policy, but it's the, the implementation is negotiable with the employee associations.
So the implementation is the only part that's negotiable?
Well, yes, because they, they, they can, they can weigh in on, um, a number of different components of, of the policy, including how specimens are, are treated, uh, counseling for, uh, those who have a violation, et cetera, et cetera, if that makes sense.
I would feel more comfortable pulling this item and not moving forward until, uh, such time as all of those items have been added to the policy and it's been discussed and cleared with all three of the, or, unions.
Make sure that everybody's in agreement with it, right?
Well, I have a lot of questions on it in general, myself, so I, I am happy to start going through that tonight if we want to, um, but I, I'm really not comfortable adopting it as is.
I concur with that.
That's just from me.
I concur as well. And I think one of the big components in there that needs to be discussed at some, is the whole, is the random issue.
We can discuss that now if you want. I can, I can, I'm prepared to speak on that topic.
Well, I think we should, the random issue, I think...
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay, so speaking on the random topic, and this has been vetted several times by more than one legal authority, the city only has the authority to randomly test those who are deemed to be in what's referred to as a safety-sensitive position. So that means that you're operating equipment or heavy machinery as a normal routine function of your position. You can't uniformly randomly test every citil, single city employee, um, because case law is out there that, um, says that your civil rights are violated if you, if you do that. So in other words, if you want, if you wanted to as a policy, just to say, "Hey, everybody's going to be randomly tested," or if you even had employees that said, "I would like to be randomly tested," we have had people say that, believe it or not. We can't do it. Um, we can't do it. I mean, there, there's case law out there that, that has shown that this is not allowed. So what is allowed, and, and I know, Mayor, you've also consulted with other island stakeholders on this topic. Um, I, I think that you talked to the Island Company about this from our discussion.
And Edison as well.
And Edison. It's, it's what, you know, each industry uses a different term, but it's basically safety-sensitive is what we're, we're calling these positions.
And what are the safety-sensitive positions?
So, without listing every single classification, it'd be things that you think. It'd be, uh, fire department employees. It would be harbor department employees, uh, public works employees. What it's not primarily are administrative employees. If you occasionally drive a golf cart to pick up the mail, that's not a safety-sensitive position. Um, but if you're out there in your daily work and you're driving a truck, you're operating a jackhammer, you're in a boat, um, those are all safety-sensitive.
But it, does it include, um, for example, har, in the harbor department, there's patrol officers, one, two...
One and two are both safety-sensitive. They're operating a boat.
Both of those are considered?
There's actually a list of them in this staff report.
Mm-hmm.
I must overlook that, I'm sorry.
Exactly how many employees do we know would be, um, uh, would have to, have to be randomly drug tested?
All, all who are safety-sensitive. I don't have a tally readily available, but it is essentially everyone who's not administrative, who, because that, that leaves us with fire, harbor, public works, code. Those are all safety-sensitive positions.
People holding Class AMB commercial licenses.
Can I ask you, don't we have, already have a, a drug testing policy?
We do.
Okay. What, what's wrong with the one that we have?
Two things are, uh, wrong with it, if you will. Um, first of all, it doesn't necessarily comply with Department of Transportation, uh, law, which we need to come into compliance with. Um, secondly, it doesn't have any type of random component to it.
Okay.
The federal government says you have to do this. The Department of Transportation...
Really? You said, "We have, so we have to vote?"
The Department of Transportation has indicated that there are certain positions the Department of Transportation clarify.
Drug tests or randomly drug tests?
Random drug tests.
So is there a timeframe on that to join that group? Or is that, or what are we doing now? We're not in it now.
Right, I know.
So, do we, have, where's the timeframe? Is there a timeframe on that?
So part of our, part of our desire was to...
I'm just asking.
Yeah, no, it's a good question. So, so what we are trying to do, uh, is bring this forward to you for your consideration so that we can adopt the policy. We, we, we want to obviously not violate, uh, MMV and, and negotiations with our unions, um, as far as how it would be implemented, but that's why it's before you this evening.
Has this been discussed thoroughly with the, with the union representatives?
Yes.
But I think there's some disagreement, though.
Yeah.
Well, as I, as I indicated before, one of the associations of the three is T8, T8 on it so far, and so we, we are actively discussing it with the remaining two. And it's been distributed to all the employees as well.
So two are against, one is for?
No, it doesn't mean that they're against. We just haven't reached, uh, um, an agreement yet.
Just...
And the, what specifically is the difference between, because we didn't get a copy of the previous policy? What's the difference? What are the recommended changes that the DOT is suggesting from the previous policy?
Well, I could actually maybe ask Tiffany to come speak on that matter. The previous policy is outlined in the personnel rules and it speaks primarily to reasonable suspicion. It speaks to, um, when there is reasonable suspicion, how somebody is tested. It doesn't deal with Department of Transportation regs. It also does not deal with random drug testing.
And I'm sure...
Those are, those are not in the personnel rules and regulations.
And I'm sure it's not as extensive as this.
No, it's about a paragraph or two.
Yeah, exactly.
Actually, there's, there's a few pages on it, but it, it really speaks, like I said, primarily to what, um, reason, how reasonable suspicion is, is identified and, and who has the ability to, uh, request a test and, and when, uh, what are, what are examples of instances when you, um, might do that?
So I was curious how the point, the point 04 designation came up, that they would automatically be fired for that. That seemed a little harsh in my mind, but, um...
Hang on one moment.
And it said, I read it in more than one, see, if an employee alcohol is between point 02 and point 039, the employee will be removed from safety, but at point 04, we said we're going to fire them.
Hang on a second.
Uh, well, it says that it's a fireable offense, but it also says that you can take each case individually.
If an employee's alcohol test result is between point 02 and point 039, the employee will be removed from safety, safety-sensitive functions for 24 hours. The employee will not work during the 24-hour time period. After 24 hours have passed, the employee may be allowed to return to work so long as the employee complies with the requirements set forth below.
Okay, but I'm trying to find the point 041 because it's, uh...
Just for reference, can you tell me what page we're looking at? Just for, I'm trying to leave through and find it. Councilman, what page were you reading from?
Oh, uh, I'm sorry, that was on page five.
Thank you.
Uh, impaired, not fit for duty. Sorry, I thought you were talking to Mayor.
No, it's okay. And, and I can tell you that, um, I'm just reminding myself about this section. Currently, with the personnel rules, um, this, the, I, one of the big differences with this policy with what we have in place now is this has a lot more specific to it.
Right.
Um, if, if, as a supervisor, if someone comes into work and, and I look at the definition in the personnel rules and, uh, their eyes are red, they smell like alcohol, maybe they're, uh, slurry and their speech a little, I mean, those are the types of measurements that we have now. This is far more detailed as far as, um, what the procedure is and, and what the readings are.
Yeah, and it's page six. So, so what this page six says is, is the city's policy that if you're impaired while at work, you are terminated. But then the, uh, thi, this, this policy says, "We will also, though, take into account through the SCELI process, if, if you're terminated, you have the right to appeal and, and then you, you have your SCELI hearing, which is you present evidence, mitigating evidence as to, um, you know, explain, uh, what happened and why you shouldn't be terminated."
And this is an important point because this is true of any public employee. You are never automatically terminated. You're always, there's always a, uh, investigation, there's a recommendation is presented to you, you have the opportunity to respond, you have the opportunity to appeal. That, that's all part of the due process that you're afforded.
Do we offer them any help under this?
Yes.
Look, so where is that, where does that come in? I haven't heard that once.
It's, it's, um, on page six.
It's there, but they pay for it.
SAP. It's called Substance Abuse Professional. So anyone that tests...
It's there, but they pay for it, right? Yeah. Well, no, we pay, but the, this insurance covers it then.
Insurance pays for it.
So, so counseling, get people on track. We've invested a lot into our employees and we want to, to make sure they stay on track. They're human beings. Things happen. They're under a lot of stress. Um, I, I, I want to make sure that we have, um, um, motives in place to encourage our employees that we will help them. Um, we're not here to condemn them if they trip and fall or they make a mistake or, or they happen to, let's say, have a great loss in their family. Uh, let's say our firemen have, um, post-traumatic stress syndrome, um, for some, some incidences that might happen. Um, uh, there's some heavy-duty things that happen in life that get people down and I do not want to kick our employees to the curb if they happen to, um...
Sure.
Do something bad and, and, uh, or, or happen to get into a bad situation where, you know, they, they turn to maybe alcohol or something and, and we can put them on track. I, I want to make sure that that happens because redemption is a beautiful thing and it, it does take place every day and it's because people believe in people and I want to make sure that we do that for our employees and I'm not sure this new policy is, is going to do that.
It does allow, it does allow for that. You want to come to the voting, Tiffany? Thanks. I mean, a couple, a couple important things. Um, yes, as, as a, as a philosophy, we, we want to obviously help our employees that are, that are having a problem and this policy does allow for counseling and does allow for, um, assistance. However, we, you know, it's, it's a two-way street. I mean, obviously, we also have an obligation to make sure that our employees are safe, not only for themselves, um, and their family, but of course for...
For the public?
The public that we serve, absolutely. So we, we, we want to make sure both things happen. And so you have to have a policy that has, um, you know, a zero tolerance approach to working impaired, of course, um, but at the same time, if you have somebody that has a problem, we want to help them, but we want to remove them from a function where they could hurt somebody or themselves.
Absolutely.
Um, so that they can get the help they need. Tiffany, do you want to elaborate on that?
Right, and, um, so there's provisions in here for, um, last chance agreements, meaning, um, we're, we're going to rely on a substance abuse professional that deals with, um, folks that abuse substances to do evaluations and to, uh, make recommendations on, uh, what that person's treatment should look like. And, uh, we, we plan, part of the implementation is setting up em, employee assistance programs and treatment programs through our, our current, um, insurance providers and to be able to allow employees to seek treatment. There's provisions in here for voluntary, uh, requests to enter treatment. Um, part of that is coming out of that and signing a last chance agreement where the employee makes a commitment to work safely while not under the influence, uh, while they're getting help and getting treatment. Um, I've had, um, lots of experience with substance abusers, um, and those things don't solve themselves overnight and we had a very candid and open discussion with all three unions together and talked about the issue of substance abuse. And what we, what, what we recognize is that, um, unless somebody seeks treatment and actively stays in a program, they're not going to get off of substance abuse. That, that problem's not going to fix itself on its own. And therefore, those are the folks that potentially put our other employees at risk while they're operating boats and cranes and heavy equipment. or backing somebody else up during a fire rescue. Those are the folks that are potentially putting our non-substance abusers at risk. And so we're trying to encourage employees to seek help, to go through treatment, to commit long-term to abstaining from drug use and alcohol use on the job and to move forward. There were two new items. You had asked us to go back and talk with the unions. There were two new items that came as a result of our discussions with the unions. One of the fears particularly from our harbor department was to make sure that there were safeguards in place that if somebody was even off-island arrested for substance abuse or alcohol use and it was reported to us, that we would only report to the agencies by regulation that were legally required to report to because they want to make sure they don't lose their licenses and those kinds of things. So we had added on page seven, under notifying of a criminal conviction under D, that we would only do so as required when appropriate and legally required to another agency. So that was a new item as a result of those discussions. And then as Ben has mentioned, on page 25 on the last sentence or paragraph, I guess, it talks about, on the very last sentence, how the eligible eligibility or the actual random drug testing will not begin until it's legally required, meaning we've met all of the regulations and stated under all of these requirements and until we, the city, complies with everything in this policy. The policy is based on the federal regulations and based on what they require. So we're stating a recognition and also as part of our discussion with the unions that it's going to take time to implement these things because of the, all of the moving parts that have to be put in place, including supervisory training and those types of things. So, and to Ben's point, it is unconstitutional under the state of California to require random drug testing of all employees. An employee doesn't even have the right to waive their own rights to that and be subject to it.
So I have a question. It says program costs and subsequent, on page six, next to the last paragraph. Program costs and subsequent controlled substance and alcohol testing costs will be paid by the employee. What is that?
Well, there's, the way this is going to be applied is that the insurance offers these type of services. And so that's paid by the employee through their insurance provided by the city. That's what that means. What it doesn't mean is there will not be a separate on-call substance abuse professional outside of what already exists through the insurance plans.
Okay.
So one, two other points on that. So the reason for the point oh four cutoff is because that is legal, by California law, that is when you're over the legal limit. So we are holding that as the bar, if you will, as far as what the state is dictating as far as being over the legal limit in alcohol use. That doesn't mean that we're not going to look at, you know, how far over or how far under, those kinds of things. But we're basically saying that it's a zero tolerance, meaning we don't... Before, in our old policies, you know, you could get freebies and get off got free with no consequences. So there was really no motivation for the employee to seek help and seek assistance and try to, you know, fix this problem. So we would much rather say, you know, zero tolerance and then try to work with the employees and based on mitigating factors on a case-by-case basis and say, you know, we really want zero tolerance.
And because then it reiterates again in that same sentence, it's the city's policy to terminate any employee who's BAC is point oh four or higher. So I mean, you've said that twice now. And if it's not going to be the policy, if we can fudge, it shouldn't be in there.
Well, what it actually says... Okay, so... Okay, right. So that's our policy. But remember, what I said previously is that everybody has due process, right?
Yeah. Okay, well, this is our policy with due process then.
Yeah, I'm just not comfortable with it.
What would be the reason why you would want someone operating machinery?
First of all, if you're reading that I'm saying that at all, you totally misunderstanding me. I don't know what the thing is, but I don't know why you're saying at point oh four, you're going to be terminated. It's either we're going to work with you if you're drunk, or you've got an alcohol problem and so be it. You know, I don't think you're saying if you're a point oh two. I think the drunk limit isn't point oh four legal. It's... Anybody got a DUI lately?
How about this as a suggestion? I mean, because you have to read the policy in its totality. You can't, I mean, so if you follow the policy from A to B, you see that there are last chance provisions. You'll see that there... I mean, we can certainly look at this one particular sentence and...
There's all kinds of provisions based on each section.
As a suggestion, we can recommend...
That allow employees different avenues based on what it is.
I know, I know. And the avenue for treatment, I think it should, it's one for all and all for one, though. I mean, other than the random thing, that's a different thing. But I think once somebody, you know, they've been tested and they're above whatever the legal limit is, the action should be the same for all of those. The fact that I might be a little more drunk than Ollie doesn't make him, because he's a bigger boy, doesn't make me any worse of a person.
But if I don't want treatment, you know, if I don't want treatment, you're going to fire me. So that's, I think that's why you need the fork in the road. If we offer treatment, if the employee elects not to take the treatment, or it drops out of the treatment, you know, then it becomes a terminated offer.
Right.
And it does say that in your two.
Yes, it does. It does. No, I just don't know why that number was picked up. And I guess some of the concerns that I have heard is, and I don't know if you, and this is definitely a personnel issue. If I choose to ignore the fact that one of my employees might be a little tipsy and not do anything, what happens?
There's a specific section in this policy that did not exist before that states specifically that supervisors have a responsibility to uphold this policy and that there are consequences for failure to uphold it.
Yeah, I apologize. I didn't get that part.
It is in here.
Okay.
And so it says that the supervisor can be subject to disciplinary action for failure to enforce the policy.
Okay, perfect.
And that was, that was one of the biggest concerns that the union brought up to us. And quite frankly, that's part of the whole argument behind wanting everybody to be random tested because they want to make sure it's fair. And so, you know, perhaps there were folks in the past that had known abuse problems that didn't get referred and tested and other people did. And so that, and so quite frankly, that's another reason why this policy was changed so that all referrals go to human resources. It's not the supervisor's decision anymore whether somebody gets tested or not. That this way, we are making sure that the policy's being complied with through City Hall and not on a department-by-department basis. It takes that ability to make those decisions out of the department's hands.
And in all fairness, we don't have human resources here. I mean, you're here interim, but you're not, you're only here physically two days a week. So what happens on Friday when we have a situation?
There'll be a process in place. We've already met with the Island Hospital. There's currently a process in place to send people for testing. We, Human Resources right now has the forms and the cups and the labels that they send somebody to the Island Hospital to go collect the specimen. So the process based on these guidelines are automatic, meaning under certain conditions, it's automatic you're sent for testing. What happens after that is a decision. And, you know, based on the SKELEI process and hearing the employees' input and the union's input and the substance abuse professionals' input. And the nurse at the hospital is an actual certified medical review officer, so she...
Right, but they're not our human resource department.
Correct.
So our human resource department is responsible for the administration and conformance of the policy.
Sure. So what this means is supervisor, as, you know, just if you want to get into a specific, so they notice, so they back way up. So the supervisor's gone through training. That's in this policy. They notice one of their employees appears to be impaired. They notify the employee. The employee is sent over to, this would probably be an administrative type function, so there's a form that they need to submit and they need to then escort the employee up to the hospital for testing. So that administrative component can be conducted just as it would today, regardless of whether Tiffany is here or not.
Oh, okay.
By Stephanie Campbell likely in our finance department who handles this type of function. Tiffany would come in further down. She's not obviously administering the sampling or checking the employee herself.
Page seven, under E, is where it's covered about equal enforcement by supervisors.
Okay, thank you.
And then one of the other concerns that I have is on page four, the voluntary admittance. So first of all, I've not seen a last chance agreement or I don't know what that is, so I'm struggling with that. Second of all, if you have, if I'm a city employee and I go to my city manager and say, I think I might have a problem and I am voluntarily admitting I need some help and I, we talk about it, the agreeance is that I'm going to go to a treatment center, do whatever I need to do. Upon my completion of that, I'm doing good, six months goes by and all of a sudden I realize I'm not doing so well. Now I've signed a last chance agreement. If I want to come back to the city manager and say, I think I'm going down a wrong path again, you reserve the right to terminate me because I've signed a last chance agreement. And that makes me a little bit uncomfortable.
Yeah, it doesn't quite work that way. The, so every time somebody, it's well-known that substance abusers have to go through rehab several times. So the goal is for the person to self-identify, to be actually signed up and actively participating in a treatment program. And from the city's perspective, as long as they are actively participating in what they said they would do based on what the substance abuse professional recommends and has them comply with, then, and that could be a 30-day inpatient program is very typical for a first-time abuser. And sometimes they have to go back at least two or three times.
So there's no real last chance agreement? It's sort of developed for each individual situation?
The last chance agreement protects the city. It basically says, we're holding your feet to the fire to get treatment and to get better. And if you violate that agreement, we reserve the right to say, I'm sorry, we don't have a job for you.
Okay, but my question was, that last chance agreement is not a set document. It's developed based on each individual person's... Scott, can we get a copy of what that is, what that means?
We can give you a sample.
I guess the other comment I'd like to make about that is that, you know, we also, as a city, you know, we've got an obligation to serve. And we have a community and visitors that we need to take care of and we're a small organization. And we have to have mechanisms like this in place because if somebody is not able to do their job, we certainly want to provide them with help. But at a certain point, we have to keep in mind that we've got a mission and we're funded by taxpayer dollars and that, you know...
I hear where you're going with this, Ben. I guess my concern is that we already have a policy in place right now. And I understand that we want to make some changes to it. So I'm more comfortable reviewing what we have in place now and seeing what the changes, what the additions the Department of Transportation and all that are. And then also looking at some of the other items in here that aren't included. For example, what specifically, it doesn't list in here specifically what safety sensitive positions are. And I would just like to be proved right or wrong for my own comfort what those positions are. Because it's my understanding that even, and I'm not picking on the harbor department by any means, but it's my understanding that Harbor Patrol one is not safety sensitive, but two might be. So I'm just wanting to see that.
Yeah, any time a position is involved in potential emergency operations like search and rescue, it is automatically classified as safety sensitive.
I can tell you with assured confidence that Harbor Patrol one, Harbor Patrol two, and also the part-time position are all in that same category.
And so how come we don't list that in this policy, what those safety sensitive positions are? Why do we just refer it to the human resource department?
The goal was to develop, to maintain a list in human resources as far as listing those classifications. As you're aware, we were going through the COF study and we still have yet to finalize some of the job titles. I mean, we just got the study last week. So, but the goal was, and what we've talked very openly with the union about, is meeting with each union and sharing that list once it's developed of what those job titles and positions are and having a conversation with them about, you know, whether they believe something meets the criteria or not. And then having that list to refer to.
And part of the thought with this is because the council will be adopting the policy, if you specifically list all the positions that are subject to the policy, every time you create a new position,
Over time.
you have to come back to the council to amend the policy.
Yeah. So it allows us to keep a up-to-date list all the time. That's a really good point.
So then is it, is it a correct, well, I'm still learning this and I have a lot more to learn about it. But it's my understanding, so for example, the firefighters are exempt from following the DOT regulations. And I understand that there is still quite a bit of discussion happening on that. So that's another one of my issues in adopting this policy tonight is that there's a whole section of safety sensitive employees that may not even be covered under this, so...
That was covered in here in the amendment when I brought this policy to council last time by saying that it's, the policy applies to all city employees and we reserve the right to say that. Not because of the DOT regulation, but because it is our policy. We do have the right to make that assertion.
So, did I hear that correctly? Even though federal law says they would be exempt, you're saying municipal law? We could require them to be under the policy?
This was the amendment that I sent you guys last time. The, let me, I'm sorry, let me just take a look here. Because it's been a while since I looked at that issue, since I thought we solved it last time. It has to do with the... Sorry.
That's not the whole thing about the city.
Yeah, it's under the random drug testing under page 12. So it notes that there are some safety sensitive positions that are not subject to the regulations, the DOT regulations. Yeah. So basically, the other parts of the policy apply to the firefighters. And that's covered on the third paragraph of page two. It says, "The city is not, however, limited to testing only employees subject to the federal DOT regulations. Other employees of the city may also be tested pursuant to the terms of this policy."
Yes, that's not a random testing. It's other testing.
Correct. So that was already addressed in this revision, in the last revision, actually.
Well, is it sounding like there's some council direction to hold this over until we see what the other two groups have to say? Well, is it sounding like there's some council direction to hold this over until we see what the other two groups have to say? Is that what I'm feeling kind of? And Cindy wants to do another review of the previous and the current and-
Well, I, I mean, the pleasure of the council, I'm not comfortable with, I'm not comfortable with a policy. I'm not saying I disagree with it at this time, saying I'm not comfortable with it. I have been given a lot of information I would like to further research. I'd like to ask some more questions. And, you know, if I could have it my way, it would be all or nothing. It wouldn't be some here, not there. I just feel like it's, it's very uncomfortable. I think there's some things missing in the policy that I would just like to feel good about if I'm going to move forward with it. So if the rest of the council wants to move forward, you know, that, that's the pleasure of the council. But I, I'm, I'm just not-
And I, I kind of feel that if we had everybody's agreement with that, with all the parties involved that were accepting the contract, I'd feel a lot better than not just having one and adopting a policy that they have to fight for, fight for. You know, I'd rather have everybody in agreeance with it. All three pit people.
Yeah, the problem is you're never going to have the unions in support of this. Because you're, they're, they're going to protect their employees that are, that are known substance abusers.
Okay.
And we put the city at risk because we then have people operating equipment and machinery under the influence. And so there's a liability, an inherent liability that comes with that decision.
Well, I, I, I'm sorry, I'm going to interrupt Rich. I apologize for this, but don't we currently have a policy? We're just missing some of the Department of Transportation.
No, no, the policy right now is only for reasonable suspicion during work hours. So if someone, if someone, if there's reason to believe that someone is under the influence during work hours, we can do a drug test. That's what our policy is.
And it is selectively enforced currently.
Right, and it doesn't have-
And it has been that, done in the past, right?
Rarely, very, yeah, very spottily.
Yeah, I, I-
What do you mean selectively enforced?
It's, it's dependent upon the supervisors. According to the current policy, the way it reads, it's, it's up to the supervisor to determine whether an employee is impaired or not. That's the way the personnel rules and regulations read.
It's the way they read. But can't these guys, they oversee each other too? I mean, you don't want somebody working next to you that's messed up in any way, shape or form. So-
But if you know that employee's going through a divorce and they're in, having financial hardship and you think it's just, you're not informed about drug use and you think it's just a bad spell that that employee's going through and gee whiz, they've worked here twenty years and I'd hate to see them lose their job. There is a code that exists, a brotherhood that exists to take care of each other. And it's, it's a liability is all I'm saying.
I'm willing to take the liability on for two more weeks to further review this and to work with. I've, every single person who has stopped me to talk to me about this, not one time have I ever heard that, that they don't want a policy. It's a matter of clarification to the policy and making sure that all the i's are dotted and all the t's are crossed. And I do agree that I don't think that's the case with this particular policy. So as far as I know, no employee is concerned about whether we have one or we don't. That, that I disagree with your statement. So I'm willing to take a liability for two more weeks until we can get this a little more clarified.
Okay, so what, my question would be, what would your direction be? What would you like to see happen specifically over the next two weeks?
I mean, for me, I have a lot more education to get.
Okay.
I, I know that two of the unions would like to sit down and help educate me on a couple of specific regulations. And then I wanted, I want to do a comparison with at least one to two other cities' policies. And I'm not asking you to do that, I'll be happy to do that on my own.
I'd like to see, I'd like to examine our current policy and see how that might be able to be modified to actually be accepted by the feds. And, and so, because I only understand that there's a few things, there's only a few things that are wrong with it. I understand it's not a big policy, but it, it, so far it's been pretty adequate for what, for what the city needs. So I don't want to, I don't want it to get too complicated. And plus, I know, I don't know what the financial burden is with this new policy either. It's, it sounds like it's pretty in-depth and it sounds like it's going to take a lot more personnel to carry, personnel to carry it out.
Well, let me say a couple of things. I mean, so we can certainly provide the personnel rules to all of you to look at, no problem. You can go to that section, you can see that. And we're also more than happy to provide copies of other cities' policies if you want us to, it's not a big deal. I will tell you that it is complicated. And the reason why it's presented to you in this form is that the city needed to come in compliance with, with law and we had a desire to implement this random drug test policy in a manner that was as methodical and, and fair in covering all the things that you addressed. And that, and that's why it's, you know, twelve or, excuse me, twenty-five pages long. Because there's a lot of considerations you have to make. But we'll, we can come back in two weeks and we can do that.
Kick it around again.
But it also doesn't include what the random program is. It just says that it's a, what's the official wording here? Hang on.
Yeah, there was nothing that talked about the percentage of people that would be randomly tested.
It was-
Fifty percent every year.
Fifty percent every year.
Fifty percent every year.
Of the safety sensitive.
That, that one I got, there was a specific, oh, I, I-
Yeah, it says-
It just says that we will use a program. It doesn't really talk about what the program is. Federally sanctioned? No, what was that?
Well, it says that the random selection will be by a scientifically valid method.
Oh, right.
So, so there's tons of applications out there that you can purchase that take the personal element out of it, meaning everybody's put into a database. They're assigned a random number. And the system randomly will select that person's number, if you will, without the supervisor knowing who that is or without the supervisor or even human resources having any input into who gets tested. It protects the confidentiality of that person and makes sure that they're not being targeted inappropriately. So there's, there's standalone standardized systems out there, applications that, that are very straightforward.
And, and with regards to the employee assistance program, what all does that consist of? And is, is that better defined?
So typically the medical plan that somebody is in. We contract either with existing healthcare providers based, like if somebody's in Kaiser, we would contract with Kaiser to send somebody through their EAP. Or the city might contract with just one healthcare provider based on, you know, who the best resources is. And, but basically, we would contract to be able to send that employee to so many EAP, employee assistance sessions to meet with the physician or the nurse provider to continue to do assessments, to get that person information about drug and alcohol use, to refer that person to programs like AA and, and other programs that are recognized out there that are known to work. There, there are very specific and well-designed processes in place that exist out there in the community and also resources that we can identify on the mainland to get that person help and help them get rehabilitated. So.
And I guess where, so I've, I've heard that, but where is that all defined in here? Or is that in the policies?
DAP, the Employee Assistance Program? Well, I mean-
I mean, where is that defined?
Well, it says there's employee-
Yeah, I think-
The question is, the, for the, if we want the program, we can provide the council the program. I mean, that's the, going to be, they're usually the ones I've seen are fifty pages. I mean, that, you know, it's a question of how much detail do you want us to give? We can provide all the information and all the programs offered, but then you're going to be, I'll just tell you frankly, you need more than two weeks.
How did this go over?
What?
Item L, unannounced searches on city property. The city reserves the right to conduct unannounced searches for drugs and/or alcohol anywhere on city property. Unannounced searches must be approved in advance by the, I don't know who DER is.
Designated employee representative.
Oh, okay. Okay, or designate and conducted in the presence of the, how'd that go over?
Who is the DER? Or is that-
The shop stewards for each association.
Oh, okay, thank you. Anyway, was, are there any-
This wasn't one of the particular items that, that was discussed at length, I mean-
It was or wasn't?
Was not.
Oh, okay. I think just that's kind of interesting.
We're, we're just saying that city property is city property. So we own it and have the right to maintain a drug-free workplace.
Or alcohol.
Yeah.
Everybody got to go to the desk and throw this stuff out.
I will say that I commend everybody involved for, for communicating and making concessions and keeping this going. It's been a long time since we've had these contracts resolved for the city. I think it's maybe ten years totally. So I, I want to encourage us to keep going here. This isn't quite, I don't think this is quite what we, what we want to, to approve yet. But we're getting there and we're going in the right direction as far as a, a policy or a policy change or a policy modification to what we already have. But I just want to encourage everybody to keep, keep an open mind and let's, 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 let's get this done. Because we're almost there. I don't think we're there yet with this. We, we all feel a little bit uncomfortable about this right now. So I think with a little bit more negotiation and make people making concessions and us agreeing to some things, we might be able to get this accomplished in the next month or so.
I think if we could get council clarification on this, because I think I'm hearing two things from the council. So I want to, I don't want to come back in two weeks and give you, load you up on a lot of information. And if it's the council's concern or direction that we wait until we're done with the negotiations and then bring in the policy, that's not going to be done in two weeks. So it's either, so I guess we need some direction. We can give you all the, all the materials now, but is it your direction and that we wait until we're done with the negotiations to bring this policy? Or do you want, if we give you the information, do you want to adopt this policy before the negotiations are completed? Because that will govern when we put this on the agenda.
Well, my question is, is this drug policy a negoti, any kind of a negotiable item in these MOUs?
So, so typically, these policies exist in every city, right? And the city has the right to impose policies. We have to meet and confer and negotiate over the impact potentially of how a policy affects an employee's position because all public employees are entitled to property rights. And so that, so, so the policy is the policy. These things that are in here comply with the law, they're explained. We can certainly, as Scott pointed out, provide further in-depth explanation to areas that, that is still unclear. But at the end of the day, this, this is what the, the regulations say. The, the, and I'm glad we're having this discussion very openly and very candidly because a lot of cities don't talk about this stuff. And, and I can tell that as we have encouraged, a lot of the union reps have reached out to you and started talking to you about this subject. And so we have an obligation under the Skelly process to meet and confer, well, first of all, in negotiations, if, if a particular union wants to try to bargain for something different as far as what happens, maybe not a zero tolerance, but something else. You know, that's not likely going to happen if our policy says zero tolerance. What we will mitigate over and what we will work with the union on in an actual situation with an employee, we will sit down and look at, we, we have to look at, you know, the, the position and, you know, was this on-the-job or off-the-job behavior? Are we talking a employee still on probation versus somebody who has a career with us of twenty years? Did this person injure another person while they were under the influence versus, you know, maybe they just dinged a fender? All of those things have to be taken in totality anytime you impose discipline and make a decision to potentially unseat somebody from their position because of their property rights. And so, so the union can try to negotiate some other process or some additional steps as part of the disciplinary process. But I can also tell you, if this is what the law says and this is what the regulations say, you know, we, we can't in any city policy overturn what the law says. We don't have that legal ability to do that. And, and so the other thing is that, you know, like I was saying, I'm really glad we're having this discussion openly. Unless you've had family members and, and people or through your job, you've had experience and exposure in this particular topic. People are very well-intended, but this policy is not meant to punish people. It's really to address the people that are definite substance abusers that are, that are hiding behind, you know, union representation because we allow them to do so. And so, you know, this is not the occasional person that had too much to drink at lunch. You know, that's not the person we're trying to get into a program. It's the person that, that goes to a drug counselor and that drug counselor has talked to hundreds of drugs and drug abusers and can, by asking them what barbiturates and, you know, you know, drugs they're using and how frequently they're using it. And, and, and those people are former users, so they know if they're being lied to. I mean, the, the programs are, we, we leave it in the experts' hands to give us the guidance and instruction on what to do with the person.
I have one other question before we decide what we're doing. There was something, I don't think it was the firefighter code of ethics. It was the firefighter something that came to pass a while ago, a year or so ago. And that seemed to be something the fire department could say, but we're under this. And so it's not as, it's not as strict, you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, it's firefighter procedural bill of rights. And what that firefighter procedural bill of rights did is it almost duplicated the peace officer bill of rights, which, which, and all that does is though that, that document governs if a firefighter is going to be disciplined, the manner in which the appeal process goes. And so it, it didn't deal with substantively what you can be disciplined for. It was basically, again, the firefighter's procedural bill of rights. And it, it sets up all these-
Does that then hold precedent over our policies?
No, by law, we have to follow, anytime we're disciplining a firefighter, we have to follow the peace, the firefighter bill of rights, which, you know, could provide, allows them representation. It has to be tape recorded. I mean, there are very specific protocols in the law enforcement field that have to be followed.
So they're able to have that, but the-
Yeah, this does not override that legal right.
Okay.
And that's the same for peace officers?
For peace officers, yeah.
Yeah, peace officers have a similar one, it's a little bit different.
You should be back-
And so isn't, wouldn't that, so that would call, cover all PC eight thirty-two?
Harbor patrol are limited duty and they're not covered by that, as far as I understand.
Well, we've, well, actually, we've been treating them as peace officers while we're, while we're getting a legal interpretation. So we have been tape recording them during interviews when we've had a disciplinary action.
Counsel? Is that your pleasure?
Well, in a perfect world, it'd be nice to get the negotiations done and get the agreement, get the agreement-
Well, in a perfect world, it'd be nice to get the negotiations done and get the agreement back. I don't know how realistic that is according to what I've been hearing up here. I wonder if it's possible to meet with the other two groups in the next couple of weeks and find out what their hot points are?
Yeah, we've got scheduled meetings with both of them this week and next week, and we can specifically raise that point.
Let's find out what the hot points are, and, you know, if it's something minor, bring it back in a couple of weeks. If it's something that we've got to work on, that's foregone.
I like that.
Yep. Those two questions that are on the table here that are pending, which is you asked, Scott, you asked what information that we need because it could be as much as a stack or there could be a whole book of it. And then also, Annie also asked, can these MOUs can be negotiated without this element being resolved? Can that be done? Or does this...is this policy something that we have to do before we finish finalize these negotiations?
I could weigh in on that one. I mean, we see it as an important policy, and we'd rather not remove it from the MOU because the MOUs dictate...we always advise the employees that that's the place that they go to for their rules and their wage and benefit provisions, and it's your overarching document. If it's not in the MOU, then it's in the personnel rules, and if it's not there, it's in the code. So we'd like to have it in the MOU that's a logical place for it. I would recommend against removing it from the MOU.
But yes, to answer your question...
I don't see...
Removing it, but...
The legal answer is, because the question was, can this be removed?
Right.
The answer is, yes, it can be. Then you'd have a separate agreement on drug testing. So you'd have an MOU and a mini MOU.
But can this wait? Yes, it can, but until the MOUs are done?
Okay. So I think there's direction from the council to put this off pending negotiations. We'll report back to you. In the meantime, though, it would help us to specifically know what additional materials you'd like to get so that we can help you make a decision.
Okay, and I think that would probably be different for all of us, so we know where to go for...
Right.
For the information, so you're going to be getting some phone calls, Scott.
But I would like to be here. I'm not going to be here in the next meeting.
Okay.
But I would like to be here when they do talk about this again, if we did...if it's okay with my colleagues. If they want to...I mean, it's totally up to them. I'm not going to be here.
That's fine.
Okay. That's fair.
I would like to be back here when they talk about this.
So if, I guess, in the meantime...
That would be probably in October.
Yeah. So, but in the meantime, we will go ahead and we'll have the discussions with the unions. And then, so we don't get any confusion, if you could email me what additional materials you want or text me, we will endeavor to get those to you, and we're not going to wait for a council meeting to do that.
No.
We're going to give them to you as they become available.
The 50% is standard?
That's what the law requires, yeah.
Okay. And do we have...I know when it comes to public safety, there's no price tag, but do we have an idea about what this costs?
We don't. Gina had started researching it over a year ago. The policy has changed because we've made it very detailed to make sure that it's clearly spelled out, so we're looking at whether the existing vendor, I think it was DATCO, can still do it for us or whether we're looking at somebody else. And their name had come up, I think, as a referral or recommendation out of the California League of Cities. I'd be interested to find out what other cities, who they're using and what they're paying so that we can try to get the best product for the best cost.
I mean, assuming the majority of this will go through, I imagine the vast majority of it will go through, then you talk about putting the policies in place. How long does it take to put the policies in place? The procedures in place?
Yeah, we're...I mean, the policy, this is the step-by-step what happens. So it's a matter of putting the, really, the resources in place.
Okay, then how long the process is...
So we're anticipating about four months as a realistic timeline because, again, we've got to get training through for the supervisors and through RGS, through Keenan's Safe Personnel Program, I'm able to get everybody trained under this policy for free.
So none of our supervisors are trained now?
I do not know to what extent they're currently trained.
Not to the standards outlined here. No?
Yep.
Okay.
All right.
One more.
That's good.
Thank you. So did I hear a request to get all the unions together for question and answer?
So what we're...all we're going to do is we're going to talk to those that haven't tentatively agreed to this to find out what the sticking points are and bring those back.
Okay.
Yeah. All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, item number nine.
Yes, item number nine is approval of contract documents and authorization to go to public bid for the Avalon Harbor fueling facility peer replacement project, also known as the Fuel Dock. Dennis Jash is here. This was recently approved by the Coastal Commission. We're happy to report. We're asking you tonight to bless the engineered plans that were approved and allow us to go up for bid. Dennis can speak to the different options that are available in response to the bid and the timeline. So Dennis, you want to explain that?
We just finished the plans. We've done several revisions. We were able to satisfy the Coastal Commission with our new design that was directed by past council to use timber, and we skirted the issue of having to raise the deck two feet. That was close. Our problem now is getting the project completed by March 2016. At that time, the way it is now, our grant expires. It's a matching grant, 1.2. We're all curious to where the bids are going to come in upon your approval tonight. We plan on advertising tomorrow for a public bid, and it's going to be a fast-track process. We're going to have a bid here at City Hall within 30 days thereafter, and we should know where we're at. Then we're going to come back to you for your approval to award the contract if it's within our budgetary means.
Dennis, do you want to speak to the different responses that the bidders may choose to provide with the options?
The alternates?
Yes.
Yes. I formulated the bid with two options. There's a base bid, which is complete demolition of the Fuel Dock facility, including the piers, rebuilding it, installing the fuel office, and the men and women's bathroom. That's the base bid. The alternate bid, which will be added to the whole bid, if council would like it, is the cafe and the open deck facility. It'll be the building itself, the shell, and all plumbing that's involved there. So we're going to get...when we receive the bids, we're going to know how much it's going to cost for the cafe and the open...
Right, right. So the bidders are able to respond to one or both of the options?
Correct.
And that's not a cost to you. They can...we're anticipating that they will probably provide two responses, one for the basic and one for the add-on. That's the goal.
And then the council doesn't decide today whether you want to build the flat deck or the additional shell. You do that once you get the bids. And the reason we're asking you to do that now is, again, it may be...it may turn out to be more cost-effective if you've got someone that's already mobilized and building the thing, or it may not depending on the bids. But if we have to rebid again, it may turn out that you'll have a separate company that wants to build the shell, and then you'll have two crews and it's difficult to coordinate. So this is what's called an additive alternative, and you just put in the documents and you see...and the reason that we're bringing this to you now rather than do it and then come to you with the actual bids is California law states that whenever we design something, if the council approves the design and the bidding documents before, then we get...we are granted immunity in case someone later says, "I'm going to sue you because I hurt myself because it was improperly designed." So by bringing this to you now, we get that immunity.
Well, in the bid, is it going to say we want three bathrooms? We want...or how specific is something like that for building size or whatever?
There are detailed plans that they're bidding upon, and these plans were approved by the Coastal Commission, and Dennis can show you these with, you know, to stack this big. They're seen exactly to the dimension, to the...I mean, this is a prior council direction that is a long time coming.
The base bid includes bathrooms. It has to because one of our grants is for bathrooms.
Oh, no, I understand. But I mean, are we saying and then the kitchen's going to be this big or in the dry?
No, it's already been decided. It's already been stipulated within the plans that the Coastal Commission approved.
Okay. I can be curious. Yeah.
That went through prior council, correct?
Correct.
Which is why we don't have the large design packet because it's already been approved.
It's been reviewed? Yes. Planning Commission approved it and past council approved it.
This is years ago.
So we're keeping the same, that same...
Right.
But this...an important thing is the Coastal Commission has approved it at this point.
Okay.
Just in August of '12, August 12.
And the contract documents? Can you elaborate on that?
Contract documents are the contract itself, all the general conditions, the special conditions, and technical conditions, as well as the contract plans that the contractor would build the project by. And they're in my office. You can review them there. They were drawn up and stamped by civil engineers, structural engineers, mechanical engineers, and electric...electrical engineers. And they're ready for bid. Putting some final touches on some verbiage tomorrow morning that we're going to advertise for public bids upon your approval.
Okay. Further questions? Questions from the audience? Okay, counsel, what's your pleasure?
Motion? Let's take it. Motion?
Motion.
Quiet, Cindy. Okay, we're done.
I got to make a comment, sorry.
Move to approve the contract documents and design and allow the process to public bid to follow for the Avalon Harbor fueling facility peer replacement project.
I will second that. Comments by the council?
The only comment that I have is I would like to reiterate that I am very uncomfortable approving contract documents of any kind without reading them. In all fairness, I do not want to hold us up any further, so I would respectfully request that if I'm, as a council member, going to be asked to approve documents, that I at least be allowed to read them. Let me know ahead of time if I need to come to your office or somebody else's office, but I just...
I agree.
I would prefer to read them before I approve them.
You don't have to stand up, Dennis.
You don't have to stand up, Dennis. It's just a blanket comment. It's not just your staff report, it's any staff report at any time.
And just for your knowledge, the only thing that's different in each project, because the contract documents, as Dennis said, include the general specifications and the special provisions. Those are state law requirement. Documents are the same in every project we do. The only thing that's different is the name of the project and the amount of liquidated damages. It's the plans and specifications that are different in each one, which show what we're going to be building.
And counsel?
Yeah, I just had one question. I think I talked about a foam tank possibly put on there. Was that on any of the plans that were drawn up? Possibly having a foam tank somewhere out in that area?
Foam?
Yeah.
Yes.
Foam tank? Was that included in the bid and all that?
Chief Craig and I, the fire suppression system is going to be like a design build.
Correct.
Not in the term of a million-dollar thing, but the contractor's going to design it and the city's going to approve it so that a certain portion of the fire suppression system is not in the final plans right now, but it will be by the time construction starts. There's been some questions with Edison about water demand, and I know I spoke to you earlier about the deluge system that we plan on putting in underneath, but the structure will be fire suppressed.
Okay.
There's no doubt about it.
But we don't...but the foam tank, we're still kind of...
The foam tank is an option, as well as several portable other...
It'd be kind of nice to have one out there with all the fuel out there. It'd be kind of...we're going to bring it up to code. Let's bring it up to code.
You got it. We're serving flammable substances there. We got to be sure. Good.
Okay. Further comment? Call for the vote. Thank you, Dennis.
All eyes?
Yes.
Item number 10.
Yes, item number 10, mayor has brought forward at your request. This is an item requesting letters to the California Public Utility Commission and the State Lands Commission clarifying votes on recent Avalon City Council letters related to freight.
Wait, I'm just going to make a statement.
What?
They have to leave all...
Yes, they do.
Even for me to say what I'm going to say?
Yes.
Okay.
Don't worry.
When you make the announcement. Okay, so...
I'm going to abstain from any discussion on a letter to the State Lands Commission due to a financial conflict of interest. I'm going to abstain from any discussion on the letter to California Public Utilities Commission, given that I wish not to participate.
And it...but I am an employee. I don't have any financial obligations other than being an employee.
Okay, see you in a minute. Okay. I'm leaving this Dr. Pony Show? After the votes were made on those letters that went to State Lands and CUP and the Public Utilities Commission, you know, we were advised sometime by the city manager that when you're going to write a letter in to someone where there's...the majority of the council feels that this is the way it went, you send the letter out and just say, "The city of Avalon, the city council agrees, blah, 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 blah." Okay? That's a problem that I had, saying that, you know, there's sometimes it's not unanimous on the way we feel, and that in being transparent and open, we should be stating what the vote is in those letters. For this to be brought forward today, I understand because Ben called...city manager called Jerry Ficker's office, not Jerry Ficker, Darwin Farrar, and he said that it was too late to get anything in. But that's not so much my point is that when I was investigated by the investigator for the Attorney General's office, and I talked to him about this whole thing about, you know, we're kind of told just make it look like everything's hunky-dory and send it out. Well, he said, "No, you know, we should be transparent. That is public record, and we should be saying what the vote is." Also, but this didn't come...so this came up whenever I dealt with this gentleman in like June or July or whatever. No, way before that because the last vote was in May. So I've been trying to get this done, and it hasn't been...it's either been delayed or we don't have a quorum, and so it hasn't been dealt with. So I just wanted to get it out here finally because, again, I'm not so concerned about sending a letter at this time because it's for naught. But I do...and our city attorney also said that we should be putting the proper record. I don't know why we should be waiting for somebody to make an official record request of Denise when if we're forthcoming on whatever the issue is, the vote is out there, especially on anything that's potential litigation, you know, public, whatever. It's not like giving somebody a proclamation, you know? But so I'm not wanting to move forward on these letters today. I'm not even going to try to get a vote on them. I don't care. However, I really want us moving forward, and I talked to the city manager about it, is getting a policy together so that in the future, when the vote is cast, it will be documented in that letter, and they will know whether it was an extension, conflict of interest, whatever, and how the votes went out, because I think that is being very transparent.
And mayor, as a follow-up to the discussion we had, I'm happy to bring back for council consideration a...however you want me to do it, either as an amendment or an additional section for you to review and consider for your policy and procedures, mayor, because as you pointed out earlier, your procedure... um, your, your procedure manual currently just says, if you, if the council takes action, that's the, the action of the council.
So, it needs to be an amendment.
So, we can, I can bring forth a proposed amendment? You guys adopted this policy as, as you're on-
I didn't think we could find it in there the other day. Did you finally find it?
Yeah, what I thought I found, mayor-
When we looked at it, we didn't, I didn't see it, so-
I brought it here. There's a section that, that talks about, um, it's, I'm just gonna give you the reference, it took me, it took me a second to find it.
Okay, I see.
Rules of order for council and committee meetings, in section seven. And they're under, it's actually under the decorum. Um, I'll just read it to you.
Please.
Seven, seven point four, point nine, I think this is the section, if I'm wrong. Says, "After the council has taken an official position on an issue, all official correspondence should reflect this position. Council members who disagree with the position taken by the council are free to prepare correspondence on such issues identifying the information or opinions as solely their own. No staff support, city expense, or city letterhead will be used in such instance." That, so I think-
Oh, I see.
So, I'm happy to bring back an amendment to your, to your policy document for you guys to consider. And speaking to, I think, what, what you're speaking to, where you would, it would either date, the letter was adopted and what the vote was, and if there were any conflicts, what the nature of those conflicts were.
Mm-hmm. And do you agree with that? You are our legal counsel.
I would, I would say that it would be appropriate to amend the policy if you want to have the votes reflected in, in the letters.
But, again, the question is, do you, just as the investigator said, and you told me one day, that probably is being forthright to put that in there when we send the letters out?
Well, I, I, again, it is, well, I think the, our conversation was, it is, most cities don't do that, but if you want the full record to be there for the investigators, then you do, then you have the option and you can. And if you wanna make sure they have a full and complete record of what the votes are, you put them in, in that correspondence. Again, most cities, when they have a contentious matter and it's done, the letter goes out and doesn't have the votes in it, but-
Well, then how do they resolve the contention? I mean, how do they let the people know that are making big decisions? That, that it's not, it's not a cakewalk?
Well, I, because, it, what we've found is that typically what happens is, is that the people that were on the short side, send their own letters.
Okay, well, so, I think-
But, but, but I think we can bring this back, and the council can, um, direct that, and we could put that information on correspondence, if that's council's direction.
Okay, I have to ask you, now, why is, there's a conflict of interest tonight, and they stepped out of the room, but when these letters were sent out, there was no conflict of interest? Why, why are these letters that were sent out on October twenty-first, twenty-fourteen, and on May fifth, twenty-fifteen, uh, to, uh, to support Avalon Freight, letters to the, to, to the Public Utilities Commission? Why were they sent out and there was no conflict of interest then, but there's a conflict of interest tonight?
No, they, they said they were accusing themselves from the letters regarding the freight line on conflict of interest.
State Lands.
I, I'm sorry, on the State Lands Commission, on the PUC, yeah.
No, Cindy, Cindy said she's excusing herself on, on the, um, issue of the, on the, uh, PUC ship because of a conflict of interest.
No, I think what, what she said was, for the State Lands Commission, she's recusing herself for a financial conflict of interest, and for the PUC, she's choosing to accuse herself 'cause she doesn't wanna vote on that item.
That's what you said.
Okay, why can she, why would she do that tonight, but not do it when the vote came up to send this letter to this very important, um, uh, California representative for, for the public?
I don't, you're asking me to speak for her. I, I can't, you can ask her that question.
There's a, there was a, there's a conflict of interest tonight, or she chose not to vote tonight, but she chose to vote before. To me, that's a conflict of interest. And, um, I think the, these letters should be rescinded because of that. I have to say that, as I, just for the record, I, I think it invalidates these letters that were sent to the Public Utilities Commission. And I'd like to go ahead and vote on this, uh, item, and, um, if, if it's possible, unless we cannot vote on it. And so, these, we, well, we can-
You can vote on it, it's, it's part of the agenda, you can vote to send these letters, yes.
Oh, no, but, okay.
He, he wants to actually take a vote on these two letters.
I'm sending these letters, no, because, because we have been told that it makes no difference. However, if you wanna talk about rescinding letters at some future date, we can't do that tonight.
I think it would be interesting to send the letters and send a transcript of tonight's meeting so that they know that there was a conflict of interest then, and there's a conflict of interest now. Or just, if somebody's stepping out now, and they weren't stepping out before, there's a conflict of interest. There's something going on that needs to be revealed, because this is an important issue. And it's something that we need to be, like you said, transparent, everything needs to be on the table about this. This is, this is a serious thing going on right now.
The, the only problem, the problem is, is the administrative law judge that's handling the case said that all the information pertaining to this case by the parties, and we're party to it, had to be in his hands by five o'clock last Thursday.
Yeah.
It's past five o'clock last Thursday, he won't consider this, even if we did send it to him. He always says, he's like digging a hole and filling it up for the army.
So, I-
Oh, so, so-
So, I, I'm telling you, I, I'm willing to not, well, if somebody makes a motion, somebody can make a motion. One way or the other, there's three of us sitting here.
I make a motion to, 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 uh, to review, well, to send these letters to the Public Utilities Commission and the Lands Commission, and a transcript of tonight's meeting, so they can see exactly how this has played out tonight. Um, I think, in the lea- the legal precedence that this is setting is overwhelming. And, and especially since the people of Avalon have spoken very clearly and loudly about this particular subject. That is, the people that, um, are, um, gonna utilize the public utility and do not have a conflict of interest or a financial, uh, uh, anything financially to gain because of decisions that are being made tonight, um, or the decisions that were made before. So, uh, this is, this is amazing to me. So, yeah, I make a motion to, uh, send these letters out with, um, a transcript of tonight's meeting so they can understand exactly what, what's transposed tonight. I think it's very important. And all parties involved, we, we should probably send letters beyond this. Uh, maybe even to the Attorney General, since the Attorney General wanted to know what was going on. That might be a good idea as well. So, that's my motion.
And I'll just go on the record, 'cause I'm gonna vote against it, because I don't think we should put our staff, take our staff's valuable time, send it, preparing a document, send it off, that will not be received by the people that we want it to be received by.
And I'm not going to second that motion because, I said I wouldn't, because when I, we were told that it was a done deal in terms of moving forward with information, that, that they didn't need to receive it, it wasn't gonna make any difference. I do agree with you, though, about the, the openness and the transparency, and that, yes, they should've known all of these things, and I have a feeling with what was, is now being said on the tape, it's gonna find its way somewhere anyway, um, you know, what I mean? So, I'm not going to second that motion.
Good night, Tony.
It'll die for lack of a second.
Okay, another closed session?
Yes.
And I have to say goodnight, Tony, because last time I didn't, even till after the closed session, and you felt a little upset. Thank you.
We have two closed sessions, uh, tonight, both concerning a litigation. Once People of California versus David Lieberman, and the others, Lieberman versus, uh, City of Avalon.
And we are back from closed session. Counsel?
No reportable action.
Okay. I'll say goodnight to Tony again, and to Becky.